Good evening, I'd like to open up the workshop agenda meeting for January 11, 2016. Councilmember Clayton, councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Councilmember Warner.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here, just so everybody knows, Councilwoman Clayton had a death in the family and that's why she's not here today.
Everybody could please rise for a silent prayer or a moment of reflection. Flag salute, flag allegiance. To comply with the United States, to a republic which stands for the nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the open public meetings, I have Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. Annual notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press Coaster and Star Ledger all on January 6, 2016. Posted in Baltimore for the same day, all notices are on file with the city clerk. Right now, we're on to items for review. City managers report on issues raised at prior council meetings.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There was one issue raised at the last council meeting involving the Transportation Center. The transfers, one of the questions involved the hours to be posted. We're going to be looking at updating the website with some of those public informations such as bus routes if they're not already there, they're sort of hard to find, and hours for the Transportation Center within the next couple of weeks. Also is discussed about the vendors internally, as on the Wednesday agenda is the approval for the city to go out for concessions for the Transportation Center. The RFP has already been drafted, it covers everything that we've discussed in the past with the existing vendors, and we're requesting approval to move forward with that. Also, there was a question in December pertaining to speeding on Ridge Avenue. The police department has been, has put up the speed trailer for, from January 4th through today. On the south side, they are doing the north side today through the 18th. Preliminary numbers show that people have been going 21.4 miles per hour, four miles an hour under the posted speed limit. But once we have all the data for the two weeks, we'll post it and I'll report it to the council meeting afterwards. Thank you.
Special events applications, Lisha.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first three applications you're considering tonight are from the Charity Kings. Their first application is for their annual family day, which would be held on June 4th at the Don O'Henry Courts. They, the applicant did ask that the city co-sponsor the event, and as we do with all events, we cannot co-sponsor events, so that part of the application was denied by the Special Events Committee, but the event as a whole is, was fine with the Special Events Second event is the Charity Kings Back-to-School Block Party, which would be held again at the Don O'Henry Courts on August 27th. And again, any city services provided would have to be paid for by the applicant. Last event submitted by the Charity Kings is for a music and jazz festival to be held on July 2nd in Sunset Park. At this point, we're just requesting that the date be held for this event as the applicant needs to come back to talk about the logistics, the musical lineup, alcohol if that will be served, and security. So we're just requesting that the date be approved at this point. Next is the Lobster Run, which is sponsored by Langusse Lounge to be held on the boardwalk on April 23rd from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. Cold War, sponsored by Madison Marquette, which is a cold water surfing contest, would be held sometime between February 27th and March 18th. And the reason for the time span is because they need the best possible wave conditions, so sometime between that time span is when the event would happen.
And then how many days is the event? Because that was the one I questioned about, how many days is the event?
It's just one day.
Oh, it's one day?
Yes. Next is the St. Patrick's Day Parade, same event as last year, on March 13th from 1 to 4. And we also have a request to do a parade day in Kennedy Park. This would also be held on March 13th. There would be no conflict with the actual parade, but this would just be in addition to the parade. It would be held in Kennedy Park, where there would be Irish music, vendors, food, and that type of thing. And lastly, we have a request from the Board of Education to use a city date for the Paramount Theater so they can hold their annual Black History Month program. And that's all I have.
I have just one I just wanted to talk about.
Mm-hmm.
The music thing.
Yes, sir.
You make them alcohol. Is this going to be up for adult crowd or?
Well, that's why we're going to meet with the applicant to get more details. I believe it is geared toward an adult crowd, but we do need more details. So they would come back before the Special Events Committee.
This is just holding the date.
Yes, I'm sorry?
This is just holding the date.
Yes, that's all.
Thank you.
All right, now we're on to discussions, concessions for IT services. Michael?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Staff is proposing that we go out for a concession bid for IT services, which is also, which is permitted under the contracts law as a data processing. The RFQ that we had issued in December was an older one that didn't appropriately reflect what the city's needs are. It did not include police and fire. It never really had, they had done their own thing over time. And there's a substantial change that anyone obviously in a police department system needs to have, undergo background checks. So we're recommending rejection of those bids, which I believe has happened, and for that reason that the standards need to be changed, and concessions allow us for a little bit more flexibility. So either in, on Wednesday or the following council meeting, there should be a resolution with your approval of going up the bid for concessions for IT work. It's on this one? Thank you. Is there any questions?
No, but we'll continue to use the company we're using now as a carryover?
Yes, they're a carryover.
Review of agenda items for Wednesday's meeting.
I don't feel, I don't feel the first one.
I just want the 201646, the, is that the street repaving?
Yes, I believe so.
Right. That was another question.
Yeah, 201644, authorizing the use of competitive contracting for data processing services. I don't know, the resolution doesn't.
That's what he just talked about.
Oh, I missed that.
No, no, what he said, we're going to have to bid for the IT concessions.
Oh, that's what that is, okay. So it doesn't say, it doesn't say IT services in the resolution.
In the real world, it's IT services, but the public contracts law listed as data processing and a bunch of other little things.
Oh, got it. And I didn't understand 2646, what that was exactly.
Which one's that?
Authorizing approval to execute an application agreement with New Jersey Department of Transportation for urban aid for 2011 and 2012.
The city never.
That's the one Joe just asked about, that's repaving the street.
Yes.
Oh, alright, I got, sorry.
Okay.
And then, I didn't understand 201651, which I didn't know if you were going to talk about at all, the brother code, the green acres.
That changes the grant match requirement amount and allows me to sign some paperwork. If the city doesn't receive all the funding, as you've seen in the article in the past from the freeholders, concerning the county that the open space funds are not currently available to the city, it, a revised resolution, which was green acres requested, allows for different signatory changes, it decreases the amount of the max, and this resolution also states that if we don't get all our match funds, we don't have to accept the grant. Could you just clarify that?
Okay, that was it.
You got it, Jesse?
No, I didn't.
201637 and 38, rejecting bids for maintenance repair. And it says why? Has this been going, a past problem in the past, or is this a new problem?
I don't believe it would, it's a past problem, but I can verify that.
Okay. And so, the companies we're using right now will also be like the IT, they'll be carryovers?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. 39, says carryover. Okay, this is a shared service with Neptune, man. I love shared services, which are very, there's issues with shared services. But it's a, it's a unique shared service, but it's a shared service with the third party. We have no problems with that legally?
The CFO and QPA had no problems with it, it's the agreements with Neptune to provide the services for us. They're managing everything for us.
And the language says, if possible, they'll do the work during the day, but if not, they'll do it at night at time and a half. How do we, but they can only do it at time and a half unless we tell them to. So are we going to put a tight?
There'll, there'll be some sort of internal control over when and how the vehicles are being.
Okay, and as far as looking into shared services with Neptune, I believe they offer other shared services that maybe we should look into, one of them being the securing and transporting of prisoners, which if we could have them do that, we wouldn't have to have our police officers like missing shifts to be back and forth to freehold. So I wish we would look into that one. And there's another one out there, Neptune with the OEM. So if you could get in touch with, I guess, Vito Gattinella, or Mike Passam, and see what else shared services they have that we may be able to participate in, I think it would be a positive for the, for the city. 49 and 50, we're going to be talking about those imposed execs, correct? So I don't need explanations of those, we're going to get explanations Wednesday, any closed exec? Okay, this, this is the one, number 52. This is the fiber crossing, or whatever it is?
Yes, under state law, we really have no say in what can happen involving a BPU-regulated event. We're going to tweak this a little bit. Myself and Fred have a couple additional comments we want to add on. From my side specifically, that they provide the police department adequate notice, which should be about 72 hours before they need a, a police officer for a special detail, and requesting the escrow fees per ordinance, but there's really nothing we can do to stop them from.
Right, so if we all vote no, they would come in and do it anyway?
Yes.
So that's a great law in New Jersey. Are there other companies out there that do this besides this one company?
There's a ton of them.
Why do they get first dibs on Asbury Park?
It's not first dibs, it's they just applied. I'm sure there's been other ones over the past few years that have applied to install cabling.
Okay, they mentioned about using either overhead or underground conduits. What happens if we're the beachfront, boardwalk, other places southwest, the underground conduits are already too tight and nothing can be added?
They can't go there. They're restricted to what they can do.
Okay, and I saw their liability, I mean, they're putting up, I'm going to use the wrong word, a cheap liability, I mean, a million dollars, we ask more for special events. I mean, and they're throwing this lousy million dollars.
I have some proposal revisions to the liability and insurance language.
Okay, good. And can we, and Nemeth is going to weigh in on that also, or?
I'll be happy to send this over to him to have.
With the JIF? And, okay, that answers that. Because if, if they try to force more cables through a conduit and they rip up our wires
They're liable for it.
For a lousy million dollars, I mean, okay, Fred says he's looking into that. So this is something like we have to do, you know, if I vote no, which I'm going to vote no, just because it's ridiculous. I mean, and you say other companies have applied in the past?
I'm sure there has been over the years.
I know that this particular company is going to all over New Jersey, because I've seen the same agreement submitted to other towns that my firm has dealt with.
And explain to, I know, I think I know, but explain to the public what exactly this does.
This is installation of a fiber optic system, a fiber optic line, it's called dark fiber. It's not quote unquote lit with internet or other cable provider services. They will lease this out to other companies or to businesses, their space on the broadband spectrum. It's Comcast, Verizon lines, it's just Cross River Fiber, Millennium is another one.
So, so they'll use our utilities, they'll run it all, and then they make a mon, make a dollar, and we get zero?
We don't get zero, we get what is commonly referred to as state aid, which is the leasing of the utility poles, which is flat for many, many years, as you know. So this is the, the contra portion, not the energy tax receipts, that this is the leasing of our public right of ways when it went to the state probably 15 years ago, at the request of the utilities.
But if we had Verizon or some company come in town and say, hey, you got this giant water tower, we want to put a antenna up there, they would pay us like $100,000 a year, but this, they sell their product to lawyers, real estate agents, everything to get free fiber, and we get zero?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a neat law. Okay, 2601, 201601, the ordinance for the bog ordinance for the Sunset Avenue Bridge, footbridge. So back in December, January 13, Mayor and Council okayed this for?
450.
450. In May, we get, after we hired T and M, May of 15, we get a letter from T and M saying it's 825.
Yes.
Christine Ballard comes and makes a presentation, and we're told, we're told we're going to get 90 percent funding.
That's correct.
Guaranteed by FEMA. Is it still guaranteed by FEMA?
It is still guaranteed by FEMA. This allows us to spend the money. And at the 825 mark, I always like to be prepared, this is not saying that we're borrowing a million, it's up to a million.
Right.
So this allows for the 20 percent change orders under the public contracts law, that in case something happens, we can still spend it, and that's still reimbursed by FEMA. So it's 90 percent.
And this point, I could have confused. When we were talking about this back in June, when Christine made her presentation, and before then, I thought we had like, and this is way before you, so, I thought we had like five or six FEMA projects out there, be it the sewer plant, be it this, be it that, and as much as like, there was dedicated 450 for this, eight for this, seven for this, but they said we could mishmash the money down the road. Are we still, can do that?
Yes, it's, the local control of it is whatever the city wants to do, if you want to do one big bond ordinance for $3 million, or six little ones at $500,000. Accounting wise, I prefer the small ones.
Okay.
Just because it makes it easier when FEMA comes in to do, and Inspector General to do their auto.
As long as we're getting the 90 percent, it's a win for the city, because if it's a million dollars, we're getting 90 percent, okay, we're on the hook for $100,000, that includes the soft cost of engineering and everything else, so it costs us $100,000 to get that, but if it's going to cost the taxpayers $550,000, I'd rather do away with the bridge. So as long as that 90 percent is guaranteed, I have no problem with it.
I verified it with Christine today.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Matters by city council?
Alright, I have one. So I just want to talk a little bit about some of the problems that were reported downtown over the weekend. And a lot of us are usually asleep at that time in this room, but clearly, there's an ongoing problem that's continuing, and a couple of things to think about. One is, we can ask, I think, the state to put their inspectors on, the ABC inspectors, to keep, keep track of overserving at our establishments. We have worked with some of the establishments downtown to put them on provisional plans, and then if those provisional plans don't work, we're able to then put special conditions on their, on their liquor licenses. So that's a continued effort by the public safety and the city. The thing that's important there is that when people see something happening downtown, to report it, so that we have a record of those incidences. And then, there's one I really want to talk about, but the, the last one before I get to the other one is, the idea of a special, a business district or some kind of district where the business owners and the residents work together with the city, maybe in conjunction with reopening our central business district plan, to talk about what we need downtown, where we are, and where we need to go. I think that's a proactive way to handle it. The one thing that I think a lot of other towns do is they have, you know, in the summer, if you go to Manaslon, Belmar, wherever it is, they have specials pretty much walking every block. And I don't feel, and it's not any judgment call I can make, but we have a city that has a police force that has responsibilities all over the city. So to draw police force or police resources from one area to the central business district, I don't think makes a lot of sense, but to put our specials on at a time when it makes sense, I think is, is, is something that we can look at. The other thing, which I think we talked about a lot in the parking committee, and it's part of Donald Schloop is the urban planner who's come up with this 85 percent demand pricing that we're using for parking. One of the pieces that he talks about is, not only do you do the 85 percent and manage your rates for that, but you take some of that increased revenue, if there is increased revenue, you take that and you reinvest it into the district where, where the revenue is generated. So in this case, you could take that increased revenue from a parking utility and use it to pay for additional specials that could work on Saturday nights, Friday nights, Sundays, whenever it is when we're having those problems. So it's, it's, it's a mechanism by which you use your parking revenue to improve the district, and in this case, it seems like the most obvious improvement would be to increase our presence of specials on the weekends when we're having these problems. So I think it's, it's one of the pieces we talked about in the parking committee, and it's one of the ones that I think I would put forward to the city manager and the council that would make sense for us to, to look at moving forward.
Yeah, and I mean, just to mimic or add on a little bit to what Joe was saying, what, if, if, if we were saying, if the council was saying something specifically we would want you to do tomorrow is call Jeannie Dello and find out, I think, or Tony Siller, no, sorry, I sent Jeannie Dello, because Jeannie Dello involves a lot of the parking stuff. But the hours of the specials, I believe at this point are from, I'm going to say approximately 2 to 12, and what might be a better time for the specials would be 4 to 2 a.m. And that would put them out on cookman between 12 and 2, which is the time that most of the business owners are saying that is the biggest problem. So if we could run that by Jeannie and Tony tomorrow morning and start that this weekend, it might be temporary relief for what's going to be a long-term problem.
You should do that.
Just to chime in with Amy and Joe, yeah, and again, next door wasn't blowing up or anything, people may think only 30 hits, but legitimate hits. I totally agree with them, and it's, it's not the first time we've been faced with this, you know, problem. There's definitely a problem in the CBD where people are getting rowdy and out of control. I would agree with Joe, I agree with Amy, we have the money from the park meters, we have the personnel, if we don't have the personnel, because we're limited to Obamacare and how many hours that people can work per shift in the off-season, then we need to hire more. And I think the council as a whole, all five of us are saying, we have a problem, we know it, let's fix it as soon as possible. And to me, it should almost be like, if it's that far out of control, it should be zero tolerance. And we read the articles, well, they came and they investigated and they let them go. Meanwhile, they're driving home DUI, and that's all speculation or anything, but I mean, I would rather go down there and set a tone, and I'm not saying be vigilantes or be in a Gestapo state or anything like that, but we have to, if we're, if it's out of control, which everybody's saying it's out of control, we need to rein it in ASAP. So I know you will talk to the chief tomorrow and try to straighten this out as soon as possible. Then there was a second incident going on, which I know Kevin replied during the weekend, where we found out there's something going on in Six and Memorial for close to two years now, and nobody in Asbury Park even knew it was there, no Mercantile license, no anything, they're running some type of nightclub. So I know you don't have the results on that yet, but I, and I know you're looking into it, but I would appreciate, as soon as we figure out that problem, you get back to us as quick as possible also. And that's, you know, I agree, thank you. Any other concerns? I have just one. Okay. Stand up, please. For the ones that know and the ones that don't know, this is our new communication person, Alan Walker. Would you like to say something? Would you like to say anything?
Oh, I'm really excited to be on board, and I have the exciting time in Asbury Park, it's a great role to have, I'm really excited to be connecting residents and the city council and doing the best I can to help out where Asbury is headed.
Thank you.
And she's going to take all questions on parking from now on.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have two things. One is, I, we got some feedback from the reorganization meeting from, from a number of people when we did a consent agenda that had a lot of names from, for the, from the board members, but we didn't read the names. They all got letters and were told they were, they were approved, and we tried to get it online in about 24, 48 hours, but the feedback was that they, people would prefer us to read the names. So we did it in the, in the interest of time. Next year, we won't. If people, you know, next year want us to read the names on whoever got on whatever boards, it's not a big deal, it was, it was simply done in the interest of time, because we put so many people on so many boards, we thought we would be here all night reading all the names. Many of people were just reappointed. You know, not, not necessarily a lot of new people on new boards, just a lot of people reappointed. So anyway, next year, we'll read them out if, if that seems to be more of the consensus for the reorganization meeting. The other thing we, that, Michael, I'm interested in and have been for some time, that I would love for you to follow up with, is paying online. I know Ricky's been working on it for, for some time, and if we could start to be able to pay for sewer bills and things like that online, it's one of the reasons we, you know, we did the whole website to start to be able to pay online and turn it into what would be a virtual city hall. So if we could get an ETA on when, when exactly that's going to happen?
Ricky, myself, and the new tax collector who started today spoke about it. What needs to happen is obviously we have to end the 2015 fiscal year, which Ricky hopes to do in the next couple of days. From there, Admins is requesting, that's our software vendor for, their financial software, we upgrade to their latest and greatest version of software. And that's about a two-day process when everything's said and done, and then they'll implement, move everything over. So it should be no more than a couple of weeks, worst-case scenario, 45 days, but it should be rather quickly, once we get the rollover done, which should happen in a week or two, get the software upgraded, which should be a week or two, worst-case scenario, and then we'll have it done, so people can start sometime in the second quarter.
Okay, so what's the timeline?
We're looking, I would say, within two months, which should be enough for the sewer bills. It won't be able for the February 1st, first quarter taxes, but there doesn't seem to be many problems for the March 1st sewer bills.
Okay. And then last, should I ask about the city calendars? How are they moving along? Or should I not? Should I not even?
They should be at the printer, and I say should, because they should be there.
Okay.
I'll double check tomorrow.
Any other matters by council?
Yes. I'm trying to think of a nice way to say this, but I don't know, a nice way to say, 45 days is unacceptable. I mean, I've been asking this since mid-November, and you can't tell me Admins just decided yesterday that we have to upgrade to something. I mean, they probably told us this two months ago, so why are we finding this out now when I said, I and the council, when I say I, I think it's we, we wanted this up and running by the second meeting in January, and I was told, no problem, no problem, no problem. Now I'm hearing it's a two-day process, but it may take 45 days. It can't be a two-day process, it takes 45 days.
45 days is the absolute worst-case scenario that Admins is putting on.
Again, I'm not.
It's not going to take that long, but if something does go wrong, because as you've seen here, our IT infrastructure is, I'm going to be blunt, it's crap, so I don't know what we're going to be able to do to upgrade Admins to get to it. There might be hardware issues that we can't do, because we're jumping three versions in Admins to get to this. We're at version three, Admins is at four, there's a 3.1, 2, and 3, and a SQL upgrade. So these are not resource hogs, but when you have a server that's a couple of years old, on paper, it should handle it.
But it's not a new server, I mean, but I asked this question before you were here, and I asked, since you've been here.
Yeah, I think you're mentioning this a lot before your time.
And I mean, now I'm being told, server, Admins, everything. And this is the first time, I'm being, I'm sorry, I'm shooting the messenger. I mean, again, to me, it's this...
For something that should take a week, it's taking entirely too long. And there's, I hope, no hardware issues with this. And I haven't even started grappling the hardware side of things in the city. I know the fire department server is 10, 15 years old, the police department's reasonably new, but that's also one of the reasons why the concession bid, that we can actually have someone who can come in and do these things.
When is our CMFO going to make the decision if paying by credit card is too expensive for a city on state aid where we're losing percentage point? And what percentage point? I've been asked this question for two months also. Like, are we going to continue to let sewer and taxes be paid by credit cards, which my wife loves, because we get miles to Aruba? But I mean, is it beneficial to the city on transitional aid that we're losing X amount of thousands of dollars paying the service fee?
The CFO told me today, the service fee has been approximately 10 grand, and it's not worth it. And then what we're planning to do is have terminals available publicly just for the WIP program, that's the admin software that people can pay when they come at the city hall.
Why do we need, if you can do it...
Yeah, why would you...
If you can do it at home, why do I need one in the city hall lobby if I can do it from my house? I mean, if that's going to slow us down another 45 days...
No, that is something, you'll be surprised, people just want to do it. Because if they owe interest, they want to get the exact amount, they want to verify it, they'll want receipts.
You're saying people are going to come in and use computers in city hall to pay a bill?
Yes. Yeah, I've seen it. Go online. If you don't have a computer at home, if you want the rewards points. We want to try to present every option possible to get the revenue that's due to us.
But is there a way, so like, when I pay taxes in another town, I get charged...
Neptune does it very well.
Right. I do it online through Neptune, and I get charged like 26 cents or, they pass the fee on to me. So I can make my decision as a consumer, I'm either driving to Neptune, dropping my check off, or I'm going to pay a little fee for the convenience.
Yes.
Can we kick that decision to the...
Oh, definitely. There's actually two types of fees. There's the credit card fee or your regular checking account fee. The checking account fee is exponentially lower than off your credit card fee. There's a 2% of the total transaction cost or 2.25% of the transaction cost for credit card. So I can't say not to use your credit card, because people like to get to the rewards points.
Right.
But if you use your ACH transfer, you will not pay, I think it's like a 20-cent flat fee.
Right, right. That's what I end up using.
So that's also updating the city's website to include that sort of information.
So people can make that choice.
Yes. Or come here and pay.
Right, or pay it by check or money order, however you want to.
So our worst-case scenario is March 1.
Well, thank you for handling it. It seems like it hasn't, wasn't handled before. And the new tax collector's done it in his previous shop, so that's helpful.
The last thing I have, maybe this is going to be talked about, is there any, I don't need the answer tonight, any progress of getting our money owed to us by the SUP people? And if you don't know, we'll talk about Wednesday and close exam.
I don't know who that is.
That's the standard panel.
Oh.
We had some discussions about that in our pursuit.
Okay. Good. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other matters by the city council? Matters by the city manager?
As you may have noticed, the sign on Main Street's broken. It's not our fault, thankfully this time. It's, they can't get a service to it. Verizon was out there today. Alicia, I think, for working on this to, for wit's end and frustration's end, but it's actually not our fault this time. This is, the modem isn't sending out signals, and they can't seem to figure out what...
When you say not our fault, it's my understanding that a bill wasn't paid.
Bill wasn't paid, it was turned off.
Then that's our fault, Michael.
That was, hey, that was in May. That was way before May. So the service was cut off.
A bill wasn't paid and the sign was turned off.
When they went to turn the sign back on, it didn't come on. So that's on them. So we paid the bill, a little late, six months, but we did pay the bill. And right now, it's a hardware issue through Verizon.
Which was the same issue as like, a year ago, right?
Do we have a date on that?
No, no.
I want you to get back to me with a date for a service call, as well as the sign company. If I can have both come there together, hopefully we can resolve the issue. And when then... But for not paying that bill, it would never have been turned off.
It would never have been turned off, and it would have stayed on and probably broken in six months from now.
Is there somebody we can go to besides Verizon?
Cross River Fiber, when they... I was waiting for that, to be honest with you.
Touche.
You actually can do. That's one of the things that we've talked about. Kevin, myself, the police department have talked about. With the Millennium group building out the fiber network for the phone, for the security cameras, which is a target date at the end of the first quarter, that's dark fiber. So you can actually light that fiber or put it on our subnet where we can access that without having to deal with Verizon at all. We'll have actually a direct connection there. So yes, there is a light at the end of the tunnel there that we can use, another provider.
The quicker we get it up and running, the better for all. Thank you. Thank you, Alicia. I know you're working hard on it.
I'm not saying anything else. That concludes my report.
Matters by the city attorney?
I don't have any matters to address right now.
All right, we're up to public participation. Have a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order and after appropriate warning may terminate. Any further comments from the speaker? As you all know, you have three minutes to speak. If you come up to the mic, please state your name and address for director. Maureen, you're on.
Maureen Nevin, Delay Court. Did we go out for bid on this fiber thing, this fiber optic thing? Did you say, what was the name of the company?
Are you talking about the one on the resolution, on the agenda, Cross River Fiber?
Yeah.
That's not us. That's a private company building a fiber network. We have nothing to do with that.
Oh, so we're just letting them use our calls and...
The right of way, yes.
And the right of ways. So who did we consult about that? I mean, as far as why we should not get anything back for it?
That's been state law for a few years now, like six or seven years.
So the state says that?
Yeah.
Says nobody can make...
Through the Board of Public Utilities.
Oh, my old friends. Yes. Let's see. I'm very happy to hear that you're, Joe, that you're looking into getting the ABC to be a little more active, maybe come down.
I heard we can make a call. I'm going to ask, and I don't know. I mean, I don't think we do more than that, but yeah, that would be nice.
Is it possible for the special police to be actually paid for by the bars directly?
Yeah, keep going, and then we'll answer your questions.
Yeah, I think that's it. I didn't realize we were going to have a public, so I didn't really think about questions for you. Shucks.
Well, unless we do an SID or BID, I don't think we can have them pay for it. The only way we can have, and correct me if I'm wrong, an establishment pay for off-duty police officers if we put restrictions on their license demanding they do it. And, which, right now, there's at Porta and several other locations throughout town. But besides that, no, there's no way, correct?
Well, I mean, I didn't mean to force them to do it, but I would imagine, instead of having the ABC there, they'd probably be glad to hire a couple of private cops, you know?
You would think so, but some yes and some no. And the Beer Garden has worked out a very good plan for how they're going to like patrol the area and everything, so we can get more establishments to do the same thing.
Patrol it?
Meanwhile, it's not like, if I go to the Beer Garden, and I'm finding the Beer Garden, and I walk three blocks away and I cause a commotion, I can't blame the Beer Garden for that. So we need a bigger police presence downtown when these, that's where the complaints are, the CBD. We need a bigger police presence downtown when the bars are letting out between 1:30 and 2:30. So as much as we said, let's go from 4:00 to 2:00 or something, we may have to go to 3:00. Because, you know, when everybody pours out at 2:00, then you have people just milling around and standing around and everything. So we need a bigger police presence downtown. And it could be specials. Special doesn't mean you can't make arrests. I mean, special ones or twos, I always get them backwards. They carry guns, they have full power, just like a police officer, just that they're not a sworn-in police officer, and they make a heck of a lot less, and don't get benefits. But they have the same powers to arrest and everything else. So we're going to have to address it.
Yeah, I mean, in the summer, towns have literally a special on every block around the bar. So there's five blocks around the bar, there's a special walking around and around and around. And I don't think police solve all the problems. When there's some drunk people acting up, this solves, a police officer solves a lot of this problem. People see a cop and they stop acting like an idiot.
I know I'm over now, but it would be nice if the specials were a little more proactive. The ones that I see on the boardwalk are basically talking to each other or girls. Doing much enforcement.
We got to rotate them. Some of our specials have made great arrests as far as pulling cars over and taking away guns. So sometimes you see them down there, and sometimes you don't see them elsewhere, where, I mean, the fire on Heckerburg last week was discovered by a special, and he saved lives. So the specials, you know, a lot of times they are on the boardwalk, but a lot of times they are walking different quadrants of the town and everything. So we do use them all around, and they do a tremendous job, and it is a tremendous asset for the city. Unfortunately, during the off-season, we can't keep them working 40 hours a week, because then we'd have to give them health benefits because of the new Obamacare law and everything. So we have to curb their hours. That's what I said to Michael. If that means, okay, we got, and I'm making up numbers, if we have 10, then we may have to hire 15 to cover all these shifts. But again, it's a lot cheaper on our basis. Thank you.
Robert Weiner, 601 Madison. Quickly, a good thank you to AP-TV. I saw the Tuesday's meeting on AP-TV, and I was very impressed. I thought it changed the whole dynamics, showing the council and the people speaking. So they did a great job. I wish they were here so they could hear that.
They are.
Oh, they are. Oh, I didn't know that.
You're taking, everyone usually sees it.
So congratulations to them. A few questions on parking, and I may have missed something, so if I'm repeating myself, forgive me. But are we prepared for the implementation of the parking permits? Are all the clerks who are going to handle this trained and prepared for this? Can they answer all the questions? If somebody comes in and says, "I need three permits," do they know what to ask, what to look for? And just as importantly, does the public know what they have to bring in to give to a clerk if they want certain things, even like the Bangs Avenue Garage, which I'll go to in a minute? Are they accepting cash, checks, credit cards? Is it going to be done at the municipal offices as opposed to the transportation, the other center over there? And do we know what to expect? What we really expect to be the most problems and confusion? And the hours, are we staffing with extra people, and what hours? And lastly, on the Bangs Avenue Garage, are we prepared to do that? Who is going to run it? I went over there, they didn't seem to know what was happening yet. I have a couple of questions, such as, I've been parking there for six years. If they restripe, do I have a priority to ask for a space? I have two cars. Could I switch them back and forth into the space that I'm paying for and that I own? And will I have to pay for it monthly, or two months or three months? And who's going to handle the payments? So that's a lot. That's all I have.
All right, I'll start and then hand off to Michael. So we'll start backwards with the Bangs Avenue Garage, because that's the one I'm least confident about. And the issue is, it's the state. I haven't called the state for a couple of days now, a couple of weeks now. We haven't gotten, I'm calling simply about your question. There are other people calling about other questions. But your question is, they told us that they were going to send out letters to all the current tenants in the garage, saying the price is going from 40 to 75, and that they would grandfather in all tenants that are currently in good standing.
Could I just interrupt for a second? They don't even have my address. I've been parking there for six years, they couldn't even contact me.
So this is part of the, yeah, this is part of the issue, is that you've got a management company, you've got the state, you've got the city trying to interface, and it's been a challenge. But yeah, from my understanding, if you're working through Meridian with your contract, they're going to honor that and maintain anyone, even if you don't fall into like, the people who'd be eligible for a permit now, where the city would say, "You're not going to get a permit," they're still going to allow you to keep your permit because you'd be grandfathered in. That's my understanding of the Bangs Avenue Garage situation. As far as all the questions about the permitting process, yeah, we're working our butts off to get it in place. We've got new maps that are getting made. We've got a frequently asked question sheet that's in the process. We've got a cheat sheet for the people who are looking at the permits to talk about like, which buildings are allowed which permits, because it's a complicated process. But we're, and we're working to get up and running with our office and people on hours in the mornings, hours in the evenings, and the weekends. So I think it's a big process, and we don't have one person necessarily in charge of parking across the board at this point. But we're doing our best to get there. So I think I can pass it off to Michael and answer some of the other questions I might have skimmed over.
We should have all the applications posted no later than Thursday morning. Frequently asked questions, the maps. The map is in final review, the application's in final review, the frequently asked questions, probably about 50% done. It'll be collected at the Springwood Avenue Police Substation. There's more security there than at the city hall. We're just too cramped here. We did a test run, and it just didn't work. Payment will be everything. Cash, check, money order, credit cards. We've run through those tests, and so far, so good. So are we ready? We're going to put a good game face on, but, you know, we're pretty nervous about it. We'll be okay. The applications will be accepted, and then we'll either mail the permit or give you a call to come back and pick them up, probably mail them out. And it's just going to be easier that way, because we're expecting a mad rush. And they're going to be working, again, the specials are doing it. Over the weekend, we're finalizing their schedules. Probably should have that done the next day or two, too. So all this information, we're going to post at the website. There's a director of communication who's going to help get the message out, and we'll get it as best as possible. I have tomorrow as my to-do list to talk to the deputy chief Salerno about sending out a NICSIL alert, which shows the importance of being part of NICSIL, that the mayor ended every council meeting with since I've been here with, that we can do a community action, that this is coming, this is this. But we're getting there. We're pretty close.
Okay. Thank you.
Jan Sparrow, 414 Second Avenue. In the spirit of, let's talk about what's good that's happening, because it's my thing, I would just like to say thank you. Speaking for myself, I own a store in downtown Hasbury Park, and the fact that you're moving so quickly to try to address the problem that all of a sudden we've all started bringing forward is really positive. And even if those specials worked from 3:00 in the afternoon or 4:00, generally speaking, downtown is still in the winter, pretty safe, up until around 5:00. I mean, safe, I think it's safe all the time, but safe-ish, as opposed, I see them wandering around at 2:00, which, that's great. But if it had to be 5:00 to 3:00, I think it'd be great. So I really appreciate, at least from my perspective, that you're trying to do something very quickly. And secondly, for the first time in seven years, I got a fabulous letter reminding me about my mercantile license, how much it was, where I should go to pay, et cetera, et cetera, and actually was renewing it. It's the first time in seven years that we've been notified. And so congratulations for our guests, however that worked this year. It worked better than ever. So thank you, whoever is responsible, for making that happen.
And can I add on that? I got a letter in the mail saying what dogs need to be, all my dogs need to be licensed, and which one need gravy shots.
I have my check on my desk, I forgot.
So kudos to Cindy for that, and kudos to you for mailing letters out to everybody who was reappointed to the board and people, you know, unfortunately, who were not reappointed.
Yeah, really. So thank you very much.
The mercantile license all started at your showroom in 2013, when you said, "Nobody had it." So it took us two years to figure it out, but we figured it out.
Hello, Mayor and Council, Jerry Scrannell Longwarrant. A couple of things I wanted to ask. Have you guys moved forward about setting up a budget committee to help the city cut back on their expenses? I figured I'd bring that up. And then the other thing is, the Hasbury Park press, I don't know the whole story about what the police department and stuff, but I think you guys got to figure out, it doesn't ever happen again, because no one should stop a reporter from doing their job. I mean, that's what they do in other countries. And reporters, I think, is allowed to walk around public property and take pictures of public vehicles. But you guys need to work on that. And if you're going to have police working, the crowd leaving the bars, maybe they need body cameras so we don't have more lawsuits. Because if the cops can't control themselves... body cameras so we don't have more lawsuits, because if the cop can't control themselves in our parking lot, I'm sorry to say, what's gonna happen when somebody's sarcastic and the cop is not in the mood for the sarcasm? That's all I wanna say, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Budget committee, I believe we've already addressed that in previous council meetings. The body cameras, at the last meeting, it was announced that we received a grant for them, so the police department is in the process of looking to see which are the most suitable for the department, but we have received a grant, those should be coming at some point in time. And in regards to the mentioning of the reporter being stopped, the reporter was in a closed fenced-in area that provided access to the building. She was stopped, her ID and credentials were reviewed, and she was let go. It's that the, no one should be in a secure portion of a police department's building. And she was asked questions, and then she was allowed to continue on her way. She met with the deputy chief Salerno, he was actually the one who saw it happening from the window, and went out and talked to her, and then brought her inside to ask, to answer her questions. So it was handled completely acceptable. After it happened, Mr. Salerno told me what happened, and no one should be in a secured, locked area of the police department. The taking of pictures of public vehicles, that's fine, but they're secure for a reason, and shouldn't have been in there.
I know we have the reported version, but that's what the public got to read, so she had the upper hand, and that...
Looks, looks a lot worse until you hear the other side of it. She was...
I, I'm just saying, but we have to prevent stuff like this from happening, I mean, who knows what happened, but had someone treated the reporter differently, maybe she wouldn't have wrote an article that geared revious from your point. I read it, and I got a phone call from friends joking about it, and I said, "I don't know the story, how would I know about that stuff?"
I agree with you.
And what about the budget committee?
No.
We're not gonna have one?
I wouldn't recommend it, no.
Wayne Conley, 5th St., Kansas Place. Joe, I've sent you like, six questions about the parking ordinance, I'm not gonna go into those details right now. I'll save it for Wednesday.
We could talk after, if you want. Answers for most of them.
But a, a general concern about it, you know, there's a statement up there on the website now, a two-pager, I guess you just put up about the parking ordinance, and it says something, in effect, if there's room in the ordinance for changes and alterations. So I understand the need for some flexibility, but what is your flexibility may be a loophole to me, and it may be an objectionable change to me. So one of those things I'll point out right now, I, my read of the ordinance is, you can give any kind of permit to a resident, meaning you don't have to give him a sticker, you don't have to give him a hang tag, you could just, tomorrow, say, "You know, I think we're gonna make him use smart cards that are gonna require going to the meter every time a resident parks." Well, you've said verbally you're not gonna do that, but the ordinance allows for that. Well, I can tell you, going to the meter every time as a resident would just be unworkable. So why wouldn't the ordinance say, "The resident permit must be of a type that does not require going to a meter?" So, you know, I'm not sure what is in that ordinance is intentionally flexible, or it's a loophole and needs to be fixed. I would say the thing about parking permits, for residents should be fixed. You know, as a resident, we should not go to the meter every time we wanna park, especially the way those cards have worked in the past. Once you put some hours on that meter, you can't move your car, because if you move your car and somebody else parks there, you're stuck without a place to park. So understand the part about the flexibility. I think the ordinance should say, "These are the things that may change," without the ordinance being rereviewed and gone through the ordinance process. You know, what specifically is intentionally left in a way that there's some flexibility as opposed to what is just wrong and is a loophole? You know, I can't tell, and I think we're owed answers on that.
So I think you relieved my, it's one of my stressors. So today, I spent a little time, it, it doesn't say in the ordinance that, are you done? I don't wanna take your time.
I'm done.
Yeah. Cause your email talked about saying that the resident permits could be smart cards, and I spent a lot of time trying to find that. It's, it doesn't say that, it just says that, it doesn't say that, right?
No, it says, "The definition of a permit is this," and then you say, "Well, a resident could buy a permit." Well, if a permit can be a smart card, then you could, you could just say, "Tomorrow, residents will only get..."
Oh, I see where, okay, I see now, cause I was gonna say, right.
I'm reading like, a legal document, which I...
Sure, sure. So, yeah, no, there's no intention to do that, and, um, right, in the case of employees, that's where that's gonna come into effect, not residents. So that, that was, I was looking for that, and that's, okay, that's where it is. So, yeah, I mean, there's no, I mean, we, when we say that we're leaving flexibility to change, what we're saying is that in six months, or not even six months, before the summer season, hopefully, we're gonna have a professional on, and we're gonna take a look at this, and we're gonna say, "This worked, this didn't work." He's gonna, or she's gonna take a look and say, "You know what? This was a good idea, this was a bad idea." This is a first step, or maybe a second step, and, or maybe a third step, in a process that's like, multi-layered, it's gonna take a long time to do all this, so. And no one's trying to, I know what you're saying, and I guess you just have to leave certain judgment calls to the city, no one's trying to like, do a gotcha, right? We're, we're not, I hope you get that feel from the parking committee.
Right.
We're, we're trying to suit as many people as possible, and we're not leaving a loophole in there so that we can all of a sudden say, "No permits, no hang tags, we're giving you a card."
I understand that, but once you're making an ordinance, five years from now, when none of us are maybe here, somebody else comes in, reads the ordinance, says, "Oh, it lets me do this, I'll do that." I don't even need to reissue the ordinance. It legally allows that change to happen with no review.
The change would have to occur through an internal operation control of, of how you hand out those smart cards, which actually falls to the city manager's position as the de facto executive director of this utility. So one of the things that, once these ordinances get the second, and, you know, second review, as, as the councilman just said, and then the professional comes in, is that there's gonna need to be, you know, an operating manual of what happens, so that would then fall to me to do, and those sort of things, the wise-ass things of like that, won't be included in it, that you can't, that's the standard operating procedures. So as long as that's in the ordinance, that the city manager's directing the utility, I'll have to promulgate the rules and regulations and the SOPs of it, and that would cover all those things. And if you see any more of these loopholes, please reach out to the councilman or myself, and we'll be able to, to address them as soon as we can.
Joe has my current list, so, you know, there, there's not many, and there, and there may be more of somebody looking at it from a different perspective than me, you know, an employee may be looking at it a different way and seeing things that I'm not. But I'm gonna say, why not close the ones that you know of, and, you know, like, in the, in the resident permit things, I don't think you have any intention of giving out smart cards to residents. Why not say that? Why not eliminate that possibility in the ordinance?